I think we can go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone. Today is January 21st, and this is the special meeting of the Douglas County Planning Commission. Excuse me, December 21st, Maureen has once again corrected me. I'm a month ahead already. I'll call the meeting to order, and we do have five members here in the chambers, so we do have a quorum present, and I would ask Bryce to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Bryce. We will now start with public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Planning Commission. Additional public comment periods may be allowed on individual items at the discretion of the chairperson. It is requested that members of the public comment on those agenda items when they are considered. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on each item listed on the agenda when they are discussed by the Planning Commission. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker on matters over which the Planning Commission has jurisdiction, supervision, or control. The Planning Commission wants to encourage the respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack, or interfering with the rights of others, the individual will be asked to stop speaking. I do not see people here at the courthouse that would make public comment. I understand we have at least one person on Zoom call. Colleen, has anybody indicated to you that they would like to make public comment at the start of the meeting?
Thank you, Chairman Walder. No, I think Mr. Teixeira is here for item one, and I've reached out to ask him that, and he hasn't responded yet.
Okay. Steve, you're always welcome to make public comment at the beginning of the meeting on the agenda items or at the close of the meeting. So if you don't have public comment at this point, then I will close public comment. I would like to welcome our newest member to the Planning Commission, Ken Paxton. Ken, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this point?
I just want to thank everybody for this opportunity, and I'm very excited to see how all this works up here in the government, and I'd like to see the direction of how this county's going and help to guide it along its way.
Thank you very much, Ken. Welcome. Bryce, did you have comment you wanted to make?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, I just want to welcome Mr. Paxton to the to the commission. We're looking forward, I'm looking forward to working with you. I'd also like to take a moment and thank Brian and Christie for their contributions to the commission over the last several years, especially as it pertains to the master plan and the work and the time that was spent on that. I just didn't feel that we were given an opportunity, and I didn't feel like they were appropriately thanked for their service, and so I just wanted to take some time to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bryce. I wholeheartedly agree. Mark?
Yes, following Bryce's comments, I too would like to thank Brian and Christie for all of the time that they put in. They all, they each brought different insights to every single agenda item, and I certainly appreciate it, and I will miss them. And Ken, welcome.
Thank you, Mark. Maureen?
Likewise, on Thursday, didn't get the opportunity to say goodbye to Brian, and I will miss him. He brought up some very pertinent points. And with Christie, again, last meeting, we didn't have an opportunity to say goodbye to her either. It was fun over the last couple of years, and I've only been here two years, so it was interesting, and I did learn a lot about tiny homes and storage container homes. I never considered that, and it was really interesting to learn a lot about the ranches from Brian. So thank you both. I wish you well.
Thank you, Maureen. At this point, then, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to approval of the agenda. This is for possible action, approval of the proposed agenda. The Planning Commission reserves the right to take items in a different order, to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. I would also open this to a public comment before we take a motion and approve the agenda. We do have two items today that are both for possible action. We will take public comment on each of those. Is there public comment on the approval of the minutes? Seeing no public comment, then we'll come back to the Planning Commission for a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Bryce moves approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Mark seconds the approval of the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to approval of the agenda? So in this vote, there's five votes aye and no votes nay, and the agenda is approved. We'll move on then to the first item. This is for possible action. I'll read this into the record. Discussion on ordinance 2021-1591, an ordinance amending provisions of Chapter 20.622 of the Douglas County Code, including the setting of occupancy limits, allowing vacation home rental, VHR, permits to be issued to closely held corporate entities, grandfathering in existing multiple VHR permit holders through December 31, 2031, subject to the conditions and terms of renewal, clarifying the liability assurance that must be held by VHR permit holders, increasing the length of the term of the VHR advisory board members from two years to four years, imposing liability for persons who assisted in the leasing of VHRs without a valid VHR permit, increasing the maximum number of VHR permits from 600 to 650, modifying the fine structure, increasing the time in which a notice of appeal must be filed from 10 days to 14 days of the date the first notice of violation was mailed, and other related matters clarifying the intent of the VHR regulations. I believe we have Assistant District Attorney Doug Ritchie here, who has worked long and hard on this, so we will turn it to him for his presentation. Then we'll move to questions or comments from the members of the Planning Commission. So Doug, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Walder, members of the Planning Commission, Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. As the chairman indicated, the county has been working on the VHR regulations for a number of years. In July of this year, July 15th, the board amended the VHR regulations. Subsequently, there was a lawsuit. The Board of County Commissioners, in consultation with the Planning Commission, made some revisions to the VHR ordinance, hoping to address some of the constitutional issues that have been raised. Subsequent to that, as part of a court-ordered settlement conference, the parties met to try and reach a settlement agreement, and a proposed settlement agreement has been reached. It's going to be considered by the Board of County Commissioners at its first meeting in January 6th of 2022. Although this board is not asked to approve or reject the settlement agreement, some of the proposed terms do impact Title 20 and the VHR regulations. I know Sam Booth, Douglas County Planning Manager, has prepared a staff report showing that the findings can be made. I can hit some of the highlights. We can drill down into the actual text amendment. It's all been provided to the public and members of this body. It's in red line, so it's easy to see where the changes have been made. I would say that probably the largest changes have been increasing the number of Tier 2 and Tier 3 permits that can be issued from 600 to 650. As a reminder, Tier 1 permits are not subject to the cap. Those are what we call true host permits, where the owner resides on site. Another issue, a change that the board and the public might want to be aware of is that the cap used to be two per bedroom plus four. With the amendments, that was changed to two per bedroom, plus a limit based on parking that was changed. The plaintiffs had requested that it be restored to two per bedroom plus four. The compromise is to have two per bedroom plus two. So for instance, in a three-bedroom home, three times two is six, plus two is eight, would be the new maximum occupancy. That also impacts the tier, Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3. Those are all changed plus two to account for that change. There were some changes in the fine structure. Originally, it was proposed that the maximum fine be $20,000 for the worst offenses, primarily for providing false information that part of your VHR application, as well as operating an unlicensed VHR permit. Judge Jones, the federal judge, had issued a temporary restraining order restraining the imposition of the maximum fine, so it was $5,000. The proposed change is to restore the $20,000 max for the worst offenders, but to have an interim fine of $5,000 for individuals who, for instance, they had a permit, they were trying to comply with the regulations, but say they forgot to renew their permit, and so they're technically operating a VHR without a permit. This allows for them to timely renew their permit, and they'd be subject to a $5,000 fine instead of the $20,000 fine. Again, the intent was never to punish those who are trying to comply, but through some mistake or error, do not file a VHR, they do not follow the VHR regulations, but to catch those who are making no attempt to try and follow the regulations. There are some other issues, some other changes. However, as I stated, they're in the red line. I'm happy to drill down and answer any specific questions. Also, Chairman, if I may, I'd like to turn some time over to Sam Booth to go over the findings and the staff report.
Thank you very much, Doug. Sam, go ahead with your comments on the findings and anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sam Booth with Community Development. As Mr. Ritchie stated, there's a staff report analyzing the proposed ordinance 2021-1591. Starts on packet page six, and as with any proposed change to, this proposed ordinance is changing Title 20.622. Any proposed change to Title 20, our consolidated development code requires a zoning text amendment, and that's referred to the Planning Commission for review. And additionally, there are four findings that must be made to approve a zoning text amendment. So in the staff report on page seven, we've analyzed those four findings, the first being that the proposed amendment is consistent with the policies embodied in the adopted master plan and the underlying land use designation contained in the plan. Staff believes we can make this finding. The amendment is limited in nature. It doesn't affect the consistency of Title 20 with the master plan. The proposed amendment clarifies or strengthens existing enforcement provisions in the code. It addresses fines, violations, and penalties, and clarifies appeal processes. Finding B is that the amendment will not be inconsistent with the adequate public facilities section of Douglas County Code. Staff believes this finding can be made. It is consistent with adequate public facilities policies that we have today. And additionally, vacation home rentals are currently allowed within existing residential units, and the ordinance includes conditions requiring adequate public facilities to be proved with certain applications as a condition of the permit. Finding C is that the amendment is compatible with the actual and planned, and master planned use of the adjacent properties. Again, we believe this finding can be made. This amendment is not site-specific. This is a text amendment, as Mr. Ritchie mentioned. It's just a change to the code itself, and it doesn't change the nature of the use that's currently allowed within residential neighborhoods in the Tahoe Basin today. The fourth finding really isn't applicable in this instance. That finding is that the amendment, if it's in a receiving area and changes land to any industrial, commercial, or residential district, or increases the density, that TDRs must be used in the context of a specific plan or plan development. And so again, this finding, staff believes it can be made. We're not proposing any specific change to a land use, and specifically not any change to a receiving area or the definitions of a receiving area. So once again, staff believes the findings can be made for this text amendment, and those are found on packet page seven for the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much, Sam. In addition to the good work that Doug and Sam Booth have done, I want to recognize Sam Taylor. He's done an outstanding job every step of the way in this complex process. I want to recognize the contributions that Jennifer Davidson has made to getting us where we are today. She has done yeoman's work in the trenches and in other places to make an effective program and give us the new recommendations we have here. Tom Delair as well has spent countless hours administering what is a complex program, but hopefully will be a good program. He has an excellent enforcement team, so I want to thank them as well. And then at this point, I would turn it over to members of the Planning Commission for questions that they might have of Doug, or of Sam Taylor, or of Sam Booth, or comments that they would like to make generally. After we run through any questions or comments people have, we'll then move to public comment, and then we'll come back to the recommended motion. So I'll open it up to members of the Planning Commission for questions or comments they'd like to make at this point. Maureen, you can go, and then Mark, and we can move down the line.
The one question I have is in the title. Has it always been a, basically a 10-year term? It says that this runs through December 31, 2031.
Chairman, if I may, Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. That 10 years only applies to the grandfathering in of multiple VHR permit holders. The county commissioners had a grandfathered-in permits that exceeded the density cap, as well as corporations who may have held VHR permits. It's proposed that multiple permit holders be able to continue to hold multiple permits through a specified period of time, 10 years specifically, but that only applies to that provision. The rest of this is an ordinance change that will stay in effect until further amended.
So at the end of the 10 years?
At the end of 10 years, anyone who has multiple VHR permits will have to lose all but one of them. Again, unless further policy decisions are made by this body, the VHR Advisory Board, and the county commissioners, and further amendments are made to this ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Mark?
Yes, so I just need some clarification on packet page 11. 20.622.020, Section D, it talks about, "A person means an individual or family, including a family trust, which owns, occupies, the VHR property, and utilizes the home as a resident. Person includes limited liability companies, corporations, partnerships, or similar legal entities, if such members reside together." So does that mean a brother and sister who inherit a property from their parents because they're not living together cannot have a VHR?
Thank you, Doug Ritchie with the District Attorney's Office. The intent was that family members could own a VHR permit through a legal entity, a corporation or LLC. However, in today's world, it's hard to define what a family is, and so the intent was that if they live together and reside basically as a family, that they could own this. The interpretation, it's subject to the Director, Tom Delair's interpretation. If there's further clarification that is needed, we can make that, but right now, it's, the intent was if there's basically family that owns it together. And the closest thing we could come to that as a practical matter was as if they reside together. So a long answer to your short question is, brother and sister who may not reside together but are actually brother and sister, I think the Director would have discretion to recognize that and acknowledge that.
Okay. So my next question is on packet page 13, and it's talking about the million-dollar liability that has to be issued by an insurance company in the state of Nevada. My question is, I believe Airbnb, whenever you book through them, has a million-dollar liability policy. Does that not count because it's not issued through the state of Nevada, or could you give me some clarification there?
Thank you. Again, Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Although a third party, like Airbnb or Vroom, they may have their own requirements to list on their service, for the county to issue a permit, they have to have their own insurance policy. So through a third party would not satisfy that requirement.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I think I can help clarify this a little bit further. Sam Taylor, for the record, Douglas County DA's office. Essentially, we don't know who they're going to rent through, so, and there are some services, lots of services actually, which do not offer that service for the $1 million insurance policy. So if they don't rent through a service that offers that insurance policy, this provision is meant to capture those individuals as well. So because we don't know who the renters are going to go through, we have to basically protect the county and also protect the renters who are going to be visiting Tahoe.
Thank you. That answers my questions.
Thank you very much, Mark. Questions, Bryce or Ken at this point? Okay. I did want to make a couple of comments to kind of sum up the situation we're in. I think you put it very well, Doug, as far as the lawsuit and the settlement agreement that you have reached, and we are in the process of implementing today. But I think it's important to put on the record that we have a longer process in mind, and this is the first step in the process. If this is a improvement from the previous ordinance, that'll get us at a good point to allow the program to operate. But we do have a VHR advisory board. They are excellent. I attended both of their first two meetings, and I know members of the VHR advisory board, including the chair, and I think they have done an outstanding job so far of understanding what the program is all about and what the program needs to be. There are people from Tahoe. They are a mix of people who have VHRs and who don't have VHRs. We have one person from the Carson Valley, so it's a broad mix. They are all extremely active and intelligent, and their mission is going to be to examine the ordinance in even greater detail, bring about facts and information as to how it's working, how it's not working, how it can be improved, and then come back to the county in three months, six months, a year, whatever timeframe they feel is appropriate, and make recommendations for additional improvements. So some of the questions that you raised, Mark, I think are very good ones. They may have refinements in those. Some of the other things that I'm concerned about, like the cap, I think the cap is still way too low. We don't have problems with VHRs in Tahoe because there's too many. We have problems with the specific VHRs that don't play by the rules. So we could have 1,000 VHRs, and we'd still have 20 problem VHRs. We got to fix the problems, not get into so many of the minor details that we bogged the program down. So I think the advisory board is going to play its role. Then that will come back to us. That will go back to the Board of County Commissioners, and I think we can have an improved process and an improved ordinance down the road. So those are the only comments I have at this point. If we don't have additional questions or comments, then I can move to a public comment on this issue. We don't have everybody here in chambers, so Steve Teixeira, if you're on the Zoom call still, or if there's anybody else, Colleen, that would like to make public comment on agenda item number one, you can move forward.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Welcome, Mr. Paxton. My name is Steve Teixeira, for the record, speaking as a Douglas County citizen and somebody who served on the VHR Advisory Committee, the original one that was put together, some of the recommendations on the ordinance. I would agree with the chairman that the cap is still too low. We're glad to see it move from 600 to 650. The committee had recommended 725, which we came to after literally a year's worth of deliberations. So, you know, that's something obviously that didn't come up to the extent it might have in the litigation. We were among those that predicted there would be litigation, and in fact, that's what happened. But I do appreciate the fact that there's been work on the settlement and that there are some changes that you are looking at today. There was really no discussion when it came before the county commission for the first reading, which is typical protocol, I believe, but I'm glad that you have a chance to air the details of this, and appreciate that opportunity that you have. I would also point out that the committee originally recommended that there be some VHRs allowed in the Carson Valley. Personally, I still believe that that's a good track to follow, and perhaps we will get there at some point. The county often talks about revenue needed for J-LIC and other projects in the valley, and the county is essentially leaving money on the table by not allowing at least some VHRs in the Carson Valley. Thank you very much for your services, Planning Commissioners, and for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Colleen, do we have any other individuals on Zoom that would like to make public comment?
Thank you, Chairman Walder. No, Mr. Teixeira was the only one.
Okay. Thank you, Colleen. If there are no other public comments to be made, then I'll close public comment and bring it back to the Planning Commission. Steve Teixeira made one point that I missed, which was the task force. The task force worked very long and very hard. I think there were 15 individuals from the valley and from Lake Tahoe, at least two of which I think are on the advisory board now as well, but they provided the framework, and the contribution that they made was immense in getting the regulations where they are today, and hopefully will help with the improvements down the road. So if there are other questions that members have that they would like to ask at this point, if point, if not, we can have a motion and discussion and action on the motion. The recommended motion is on page four, and as Sam Taylor and Doug Ritchie, or Sam Booth and Doug Ritchie mentioned, if we could amend that motion, whoever would like to make it to say, to include the ability to meet the required findings, that will provide us with a solid motion. So, if we have questions, we can have questions. If not, if someone could offer a motion. Bryce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve ordinance 2021-1591 to the Board of County Commissioners as amended.
And that'll include the basis on the staff report, the presentation, public comments, and the ability to meet the required findings?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, yes. I was reading off of the motion on page six. So, yes.
Thank you, Bryce. Is there a second?
This is Mark. I'll second that motion.
Mark seconds the motion. So, the motion has been made and seconded to approve ordinance 2021-1591. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. So, in this, there's five votes aye and no votes nay, and the motion is agreed to. We will now move on to Agenda Item Two, and I will read this into the record. This is for possible action as well. This is discussion on accepting the 2021 Planning Commission Activities Report, which encompasses a short summary and item-by-item description of the Planning Commission decisions in 2021. Sam Booth, you've prepared this report, and you can make your presentation now.
Thank you once again, Mr. Chairman. Sam Booth, Deputy Director of Community Development, for the record. As the Planning Commission is aware, each year, we prepare a report to forward on to the Board of County Commissioners, and the county commissioners will review this after the first of the year to report on activities that the Planning Commission heard and approved or denied, or maybe continued in a few instances. Also attached in this report is a recap of administrative hearing panel activities as well, just to hit a few of the highlights of the report here. In the overview on page 28 of your packet, you can see, and as the Planning Commission is fully aware, applications we heard in the past year included just one zoning map amendment, several zoning text amendments, two tentative industrial subdivision maps, four special use permits, two major variances. We had one at Tahoe and one in the valley. It was really, the one in the valley here was just an extension of a variance previously approved. We did approve a division of land into large parcels, and one design review that was heard that was reviewed or forwarded on to the Planning Commission from staff, as well as an appeal from an administrative hearing panel item. Of note, that I noted in the staff report is that no master plan amendments were submitted, and no residential subdivision maps or plan developments were submitted. I think that's very telling. At the last meeting, we discussed the master plan, won an award from the state APA, and so I think it's, we're proud of the fact that no amendments were made to the master plan in the last year since it's been approved. I did jot down some notes in addition to the report, just to give you a further recap of applications and compared 2020 to 2021. In year 2020, we had two master plan amendments, while as I mentioned, last year we had zero. In 2020, we had five zoning map amendments, while we just had one in 2021. We had four zoning text amendments in both of those years. One specific plan in 2020, that was the Buckeye Farm specific plan in December of 2020 approved. We had zero applications submitted for that in 2021. No plan developments in 2021, but we did have two in 2020, and special use permits. We had two of those in 2020, but we had four of those heard this year. And really, that covers it. We had, we did have six tentative subdivision maps in 2020, and we only had two, and both of those two were industrial or commercial only in 2021. We had several applications for designer views, quite a few. Those are administrative, as we discussed when staff forwarded that last designer view to the Planning Commission to review. So, in general, I think these major applications, you're seeing, the Planning Commission did not hear quite as many of those larger zoning map amendments or residential subdivision maps, plan developments. But that doesn't tell the whole story, and I think community development staff was very busy in the last year. Our total applications for the planning division of community development were up from 239 in 2020 to 283 applications in 2021. So, we're averaging about 23 and a half applications reviewed each month, as the Planning Commission is aware. For most of the year, we really just had two planners, Lucille Rayo and Lorenzo Mastino. That was about the same in 2020 as well, but we had an increase of about four applications a month in the last year. Some of those, some of that increase is a few different things. A lot of it's miscellaneous applications. Those are signed permits, temporary use permits, minor modifications. The building allocations still fall under planning application, but a few of those were, we've seen a lot of pre-application meetings. Staff held 44 pre-application meetings with proposed projects in the last year, and then designer views, minor designer views, and designer views for accessory dwellings. We reviewed 46 of those in 2021, while we only reviewed 31 of those in 2020. So, I guess the story I'm telling to you today is, while the major applications were down a bit in the past year, we had quite a few more administrative reviews and pre-application meetings, those type of things that staff was reviewing. Additionally, this report that we put together here really just recaps the planning items that community development reviews. I know the engineering applications are up in the past year, and building applications are on the rise as well in the past year, and I think Tom Delair and I will be working on a full report, recapping each of the divisions' work and the applications and revenue generated, those type of things, as we move into the next year and close out the totals for 2021, and as we move into the budget reporting in the spring. Just wanted to give you that recap, and of course, as I said, this Planning Commission Activities Report is for the Planning Commission's review today and to be forwarded on to the county commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Sam. You and the rest of the staff have done a great deal of work, and I would like to note again the fact that you've been short-staffed for probably well over a year and a half, if not two years. So, we would like to acknowledge the hard work that everybody does and the fact that you get the job done with fewer people than we might need. So, with that, I will move to the Planning Commission members for their questions or comments, and then, as we did before, we go to any public comment, and then we would ask for a motion to approve the report and forward to the Board of County Commissioners. So, questions of the members of the Planning Commission of Sam Booth, or comments that they'd like to make at this point? Maureen?
Since you're coming back in January or February, I guess you can't tell me how many housing building permits you issued?
I don't have that total in front of me today, Maureen, but we will have that after, you know, the next few weeks here. We've just got a few weeks left in the year. We'll put those totals together. We'll be correcting our, and updating our allocation sheets and our subdivision totals, those type of things. I would foresee early next year, we'll give the Planning Commission our typical annual report on the master plan, which would include a topic of growth management and the allocations and those approved subdivisions, and how many units we have on the books versus approved, those type of things.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Other questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission? Okay, thank you. We will now turn to a public comment. If there's any public comment, there doesn't appear to be here in the meeting room. Maureen, is anybody on Zoom that would care to make public comment?
Thank you, Chairman Walder. No, Steve has left the Zoom meeting, and it's only us.
Okay. Thank you very much, Colleen. Then I'll close public comment on Agenda Item Two, and we'll come back to members of the Planning Commission. The recommended motion is on page 27 of your packet. Is there other discussion or someone who would like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to recommend to accept the 2021 Planning Commission Activities Report and forward it to the Board of County Commissioners with the inclusion of information for the pending December Agenda Items.
Thank you very much, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Maureen seconds the motion. The motion is to accept the Planning Commission Activities Report, forward it to the Board of County Commissioners. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? So, in this vote, there's five votes aye, no votes nay, and the motion is approved. So, we have concluded Agenda Item Number Two, and we will now move to closing public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Planning Commission, or those Agenda Items where public comment has not already been taken. Again, there appears to be no public comment from the meeting room, and Colleen, if you don't have any additional people who've joined us on Zoom or public comments, then we can close public comment. Okay, we will close public comment. I do have some closing remarks that I would like to make at this point. I want to thank everyone for their very good work today and this year. I particularly appreciate the work done by our staff, Sam Booth, Sam Taylor, Doug Ritchie, Jennifer Davidson, who's not here. They have each done an excellent job on the Planning Commission activities. There are a number of other individuals who have contributed to the success of the Planning Commission, not only this past year, but during my entire four years as a member. First and foremost, to my fellow Planning Commissioners, you have taught me a great deal about our county and made our actions an asset to the Board of Commissioners and to the people of Douglas County. Ken, you have your first meeting under your belt. We're glad you were willing to apply for the position. I look forward to working with you. Nick, from the day you started, you jumped into your position with enthusiasm and an insightful understanding of how planning can be beneficial to Douglas County. Thank you for being an active part of the team. Bryce, you've brought a valuable set of knowledge and skills to our meetings that have improved our work product. I value your business experience and the effort you make to dig deep into the issues and find good information and provide positive solutions. Mark, the wealth of understanding about Douglas County you bring to the Planning Commission is immeasurable and invaluable. You know the people who have shaped us in the past, are guiding us in the present, and who will lead us in the future. Thank you. Brian Oland began with me on the Planning Commission four years ago, and I can't count the number of times he made an argument exactly as I would expect from a CPA. Precise, direct, clear, and with conviction. Your value to the Planning Commission, Brian, was priceless, even though we paid you less than $10 an hour. Last but not least, our Vice Chairman, Maureen. On every issue, you do your homework, dig deep into all aspects, and ask tough questions. We can always count on you to make sure our actions are in the best interests of Douglas County. Thank you. As a former staffer, I have a great appreciation of the work done by those who assist the Planning Commission. In the interest of time, I can't name everyone, but there are countless individuals who have done outstanding work every day, month in and month out. County Manager Patrick Kates and Assistant County Manager Jennifer Davidson bring inspired leadership and effective management to jobs most would find impossible. Thanks to both of you. Our Clerk's Office, led by Amy Burgins, has been a stalwart in performing their duties, large and small, often lengthy and tedious, but always with great skill and a good spirit. Truly an example of the best we want from our public servants. Michelle, thank you for all of your good work, and please pass on our thanks to all of your colleagues who have assisted us. The District Attorney's Office, in particularly Sam Taylor, but before him Cynthia Gregory, and at times Doug Ritchie, have advised us well and showed their skill in helping us with what we should do and not do. Sam Taylor, you have a great attention to detail, and you guide us with a positive attitude. Many, many thanks. Thank you also to the GIS staff, the IT staff, and to SOSU TV. We would be lost without each of you. Finally, the Community Development Department and Planning staff are to be commended for both the volume and the quality of the work they do. Tom Delair is both a strong leader and a selfless worker with a history of knowledge that has served us well. Sam Booth, we ask you to do everything from running our planning department to getting your hands dirty in the research and writing our master plan and our monthly Agenda Items. Thank you very much. Colleen, Ann, and Lucille, you are the backbone of our operations and make considerable contributions to both the Planning Commission and the public. We appreciate your work greatly. Until I started on the Planning Commission, I had little understanding of the value to our county of the Record Courier and particularly its editor Kurt Hildebrand. A free and fair press makes all of us accountable. Kurt Hildebrand does his work with the highest professionalism. But added to this, he brings a great understanding of the history of Douglas County, what we are today, and to challenge us to what we should be in the future. Every county needs a Kurt Hildebrand. Let me also thank the members of the Board of Commissioners that appointed me to the Planning Commission four years ago, and to those commissioners that voted for my reappointment last week. And we should all thank the citizen participation throughout the year, which is an essential contribution to our democratic process. We appreciate those who take the time to be involved in our work. Again, thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas, and have a safe and happy New Year. With that, I will declare the meeting adjourned.